Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. We're going to start with the NERDA Advisory Board, April 11, 2018. Is there any public comment on the NERDA Advisory Board? Seeing none, approval of minutes from the March 28, 2018, meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Approval of contract amendment with Sun Island Fuel. Paula?
Yes. The approval for the contract amendment with Sun Island Fuel is just changing the period of service from the original contract, which was seasonal, and the amendment changes that to provide fuel, the supply and delivery of diesel fuel year-round.
Okay.
So I recommend the board both that amendment and authorize the Chair to sign.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Approval of contract amendment with VTS.
Same situation. Period of services was seasonal and the amendment makes it year-round.
What is VTS?
It's our operating company.
Okay. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
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 All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, and a report from the Finance and Audit Committee?
So the Finance and Audit Committee met this morning. If you remember, this was kind of a double process where we last month got the draft. We made some comments on it and then the Finance and Audit Committee met again today and were making that same budget recommendation to you. And we made a salary recommendation last time, which we didn't have a, which we didn't discuss as a group, but that administrator had a higher number in there and we, and we, she revised the budget to reflect the number that we talked about last month, so last week. But that, but that's certainly up for discussion at some point in our meeting.
Right. Do you want to move on to the approval of salaries? Is that fine, Paula?
Yep.
Okay. Do we want to, so the administrative salary, we talked about a 7% raise for one year and the thought behind that was of the increase outside of a 2% or 3% raise was the added work that Paula had to do with the year-round service. And so we, we talked about that just between Jim and I and we came to the 7%, so I don't know how, how the board feels, if they're going to approve that or discuss it. Got any questions?
No questions. I think the 7%, the way that you arrived at the 7% made sense.
And that's, that was for one year? It wasn't for three years?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. On to approv-, sorry?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Approval of 2018 fixed route operation schedule.
Okay, I, I know you guys have seen this a lot of times because it's backed up the budgets that have been presented. It's the level of service we talked about, including year-round service and the summer service, and I just need the board's approval for that.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Then we have the approval of the FY '19 budget.
So with the change the board just voted on in terms of the administrator's salary, I recommend approval. Trying to make that motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, other business? You have anything else?
Just wanted to mention once again while I'm before the board and the public that we will be holding a kickoff event and ribbon cutting for year-round bus service, April 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Greenhound. Everybody's welcome. Please come. And that service is also starting April 27th this year and it'll be the start of year-round, year-round bus service for us, so.
That's great to hear.
Information's on our websites. Writer's guides are out, passes are on sale. Come on down. Call, email, check out the website.
And you have giant scissors for the ribbon cutting?
I do, I do have a really long pair of scissors to cut the ribbon. Yours are a little shorter, sorry.
Okay, so that's it. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the April 11, 2018 Select Board Meeting, called to order. We have one change in the agenda tonight, I believe. Public hearings, number three, the considered application of new entertainment license for Bartlett's Bushenview Farm has been moved to a later date. Is that correct? Yep, okay. That's, I believe that's the only change. Is there, yep, okay.
And, sorry, Jason, when you guys get to that, you'll have to make a motion to continue it to a date certain.
Okay. Great. All right, announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, this meeting is being video and audio recorded. 2018 Committee, Board and Commission vacancies are coming up for openings that will be coming open in, on July 1st. There is a timeline in your packet up on the screen. It's also on the website. We encourage people to look at the website if they are interested in getting involved in town government. There are a number of committees that will have openings and we're in the process now of notifying the incumbents and asking if they wish to be considered for reappointment and getting ads in the paper and things of that nature. So hopefully people will check out the website for more information on those things.
Libby, did you say, was there a deadline on that, when people have to decide and turn it in?
We have two sort of sections of applications. The first deadline is May 18th for the first kind of batch of committee applications and we'll be having a public hearing on those on May 23rd. The second deadline is June 1st and we'll have a public hearing on those on June 6th. And then the board's annual appointment date is June 27th.
Thank you.
DPW Director is going to give us a update on a couple of road projects, the Boulevard and Popus Road at Sacagawea Pond.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair. Rob McNeil, DPW, I just want to give a rundown, sort of a running list of the priorities for paving this spring. Obviously progress is being made at South Beach Street, at South Beach Extension as contractor continues to work the sidewalks and crosswalks and prepare the subgrade for paving to reopen that street. There is a ribbon cutting scheduled for the 26th, the Thursday before, definitely weekend. We're hoping to simultaneously get off of the paving there and go right out to pave the Popus Road in the area around Sacagawea Pond that was just recently opened yesterday. Right now, the damaged areas in the pavement have been restored up to grade, so it's passable, but it hasn't yet been paved. Most of the work has been shoring up the shoulder of the road and that's obviously taking time. It's been delayed getting materials here. You have to do that. We would then move on to straight wharf, the sidewalk widening. We're trying to get that done before summer. Then back to a paving effort, back to the Milk Street project to finish that up, followed by a mill and overlay project that's been a long time coming on surf side in the Tashima-McLean area, which would essentially cut off the water that is now running down into those private roads.
Rob, those are, those are private roads?
Those are private roads.
We're just doing the entrance?
We're doing essentially the surf side and the bike path areas at the throat of those entrances. Followed by South Shore. Actually, South Shore will occur hopefully over the summer at the very end. Road has broken up quite a bit through the winter and it's been sort of limped along to get us this far. It's a dead end, very low traffic volume in the summer and we should be able to tackle that without a lot of disruption. And then Boulevard, finally. That's what's on the docket for today.
Any questions?
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rob. Lastly, town offices will be closed next Monday, April 16th, for Patriots Day.
Thank you, Libby. Is there any public comment on items that are not on the agenda?
Good evening, and just to pick up on what Rob said to the Vice Chair and Chair, congratulations on your, on your new position for Dawn and new position for you, Mr. Chair, so.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton.
I'm, I'm here just to speak briefly because I know on next week's agenda, we expect to have the SBPF application as part of that agenda. And I think it would be helpful to many of our citizens to get a feel for the process the board expects to follow in their deliberations on that application. For example, are you going to hold a public hearing? I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but there are a number of things you might choose to do during that process and to share them to the extent you can with the public, I think would be helpful to everybody, SBPF as well as those who have perhaps a different point of view. I'm also alert you had a, an executive session on the matter and having my own experience with those, I would encourage you to be as public as possible about the issues that are discussed there to the extent you can be. And sometimes it's a fine line, but my own experience is the more you bring out, the better off for you and everybody in the long term, okay? And I'll just read you one example of a sentence in the MOU. I think discussion is going to need more than one session on this, just, and I think the public, for example, needs to know, this is paragraph eight, just, I'll just read one sentence. "The parties agree to diligently pursue the permitting, design and construction of phases two and three of the project, if necessary, including an agreement on cost sharing and possible betterment assessments." And the reason I emphasize cost sharing, it's not totally clear what that might be, but in my mind, that might involve the taxpayer, our citizens having some involvement in the project. I think they need to be alert to that possibility and that kind of discussion, at some point, people are going to bring those things up. So I just wanted to go through that for you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dawn.
I just wanted to say we did discuss this in the agenda meeting today and a lot of what will be said by this board next week will be an update about some of the things that came out of executive session in terms of information that's needed. And it will be a short board next week because I won't be here. So I think it will be more of a discussion, is how it's phrased on the agenda.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Rick, people are encouraged to come and make comments next week.
Thank you, Select Board. Congratulations also. I attempted to get on the agenda eight days ago and...
Should we state your name? I know who you are.
My name's Andy Lowell for New Lane.
Thank you.
Here as a private citizen. I'm not here to point any fingers. I'm here to help resolve a problem. Excuse me if I may sound harsh. I'm saturated with passionate anxiety. This has become a matter of public health and safety. Wet basements, and I'm talking about the opening of Maya Comet Pond, releasing our great ponds to the ocean when necessary. It has become a matter of public health and safety. Wet basements breed mold and mildew. The risk for electrical shock is frightening. A considerable contribution to our waste stream is also a result. A burden on the sewer system and added demand to the electricity consumption is irresponsible to our infrastructure. I would like to address the arguments against opening Maya Comet Pond, which you heard several of two weeks ago. Quote, "Pond opened by heinous fools or vigilance to benefit a few wet basements." I'd like to correct that. The pond was opened illegally out of desperation for the sake of a few hundred or more negatively affected. Please try to imagine yourself in this predicament. The stress on quality of life is tremendous. You come home from work exhausted, looking forward to relaxing, but instead you're struggling with pumps and pipes and hoses and extension cords. Your interior finish is destroyed. Your ceiling insulation absorbs the moisture and falls down into your water-soaked floor. Your freezer and your washer and dryer and your home heating systems are compromised and even rendered useless. Belongings and stored items, family valuables saturated. Inventory and estimates need to be obtained for insurance claims. Your child needs help with some homework while you're mucking in the basement. Frustration leads to an argument with your spouse. The list goes on. Quote number two, "They built in the wrong place." Well, why were they not warned they were building in the wrong place? They were all issued building permits on these so-called wrong places. The subdivisions they live in, whether it's Pine Valley or Allen's Way, were all approved subdivisions. The lots were zoned for residential use. They all adhered to side yard, front yard, rear yard setbacks. Height restrictions, length limitations were adhered to as well. Their building plans included detailed basement and foundation descriptions were reviewed and approved by the building department. It's obvious that the depth they were allowed to build to was left out in the regulations. I personally have built a house in Pine Valley that suffers with this heinous condition. Excavating the foundation did not reveal any clues of moist soil and no problem existed for the first six years. No warning from any regulatory board or commission or department of groundwater level fluctuations. Quote number three, "Opening Maya Comet won't make a difference." Well, relief has been noticeable to some in as little as five days. If you look around at the Nantucket Bank, they've got a hose coming out of their basement. Nantucket Pure down by Office Products, Miz and Mast Road, it's been turned into a river with so many people pumping water from their basements and they're just recirculating it. It's coming right back in as fast as they pump it out. The pressure is subsiding as we speak. History has proven that Maya Comet Valley runs all the way to hatches. Hummock Pond reaches to the old skating pond called Mill Pond on New Lane. My own yard off of New Lane is currently flooded. It's happened before. When hummock is, is released, my yard dries up and my neighbors that pump into my yard shut their pumps off soon after. Thanks to the heinous fools that opened the pond, or, I'm sorry, quote number four you heard two weeks ago was thanks to the heinous fools that opened the pond for creating a mud hole in my backyard and the mosquito problem that will soon arise. Well, soon the mud will dry. The watershed will drain to the pond and empty the swollen watershed of stagnant water pockets that actually will lessen the breeding capabilities of the mosquitoes. Quote number five, you've heard of saltwater intrusion. Managing Maya Comet as a freshwater body. If historic management was recorded, it was proven decades ago that wind forecasts make all the difference. Properly done for years by Leicester Ayers of the DPW in the 50s and 60s resulted in no saltwater intrusion and the scare statement of fish kill was unheard of. What we should be alarmingly concerned with when it comes to salt is the thousands of tons of calcium chloride-laced salt and chemically compounded ice melts being deployed as treatment to our road surfaces in watersheds island-wide. Off-island, there's warnings of this on highways. No salt in use because you're in a watershed area. I think it's something we need to take into consideration. This practice is sure to be the cause of negative effects in the future. Charles Costello is a hired consultant by the town in Nantucket. He monitors the condition of all of our water bodies for the past 25 years. Last year's report showed Maya Comet Pond being the most unhealthy water body on island. We've posted no swimming signs there. A town official named it, nicknamed it "The Diaperload Pond." That's a quote. Hummock Pond is reported to be much healthier with regular openings. Both ponds support the same fish and habitat. I have fished them both since childhood. Why are the two treated so differently, yet they are so similar? Releasing the ponds to the ocean date back to the Native American Indians. I imagine they used their canoe paddles. Early day farmers used a horse and a plow and progressed to using a Jeep with a plowtoad behind it. The DPW had a track tow machine that did the job for decades. Maya Comet Pond once had a drain pipe with a valve on it. In the past, vigilance wasn't necessary and politics were not involved. It was an agreed-upon practice. It was a springtime freshening. It attracted fishermen. It was celebrated. Herring runs were very popular and they're now, herring are now being considered to be added to the endangered list, something we should also take into consideration because herring were able to run into Maya Comet Pond for five days during its opening. During its opening, I made it a point myself to keep an eye on how things managed to take care of themselves at Maya Comet Pond. I went out at every high tide for seven days straight, didn't notice any saltwater intrusion. The pond was burgeoning so much, there was too much current leaving the pond to ever allow any saltwater to enter, enter. Today's building practices in some areas may convince you that pumping and de-watering are typical part of the building process today. Please don't be misled by this. It is not. Managing the groundwater level, not to be confused with the aquifer, is not complicated and monitoring it could be very simple. An old-fashioned measuring stick could be embedded into each pond with visible lines of indication located on it, being easily recorded from the seat of your automobile and there should be a mark on it mentioning danger level. The solution here is so simple, it's primitive. Complaints from citizens should be recorded. Getting to know the people affected and monitoring their conditions would be helpful. Having a benchmark attached to future building permits will eliminate any new dwellings from the suffering. I've heard that Nantucket has good problems. This is not one of them. How often do we hear that Nantucket is a helpful and caring community, looking out for each other? Why should this problem be any different? People desperate enough to take action themselves should attest to the need of resolution. This problem will continue to reappear by nature. It is not going away. It has lingered for decades. Don't let the heinous fool, mystery vigilant, be the hero. This is a good opportunity to gain respect from island residents and many of your constituents. First and foremost, man has built shelter to stay dry in. Solving this problem can be simply resolved tonight with very little financial impact. The damage to Popus Road by the high waters of Sacagawea Pond could have been avoided by responsible management. Well, board member, please make a motion to monitor and manage Nantucket's surface groundwater level by releasing the pond water to the ocean before it becomes a problem, hence eliminating a public health and safety condition. I was told that Natural Resources would be speaking about this tonight. I don't see it on the agenda. If this happens to come up on the agenda again, I would certainly like the chance to have to read this again, but I hate to put you all through this. I realize there are lots of problems here to solve on this island. This is a simple one, but it's time to take action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Move over to new business. No new business that I know of. Over to approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts? Approval, approval of minutes of February 7, 2018, Select Board Meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 7th, March 28th, and March 28th.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
That is approved. Approval of payroll warrants for weeks April 1st, 2008, and April 8th?
Make a motion to approve payroll warrants of the dates mentioned and also treasury warrants for April 4th and April 11th.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of pending contracts. Is there any questions or anything you'd like to go over? Libby?
Just want to mention the second one for the tennis court resurfacing at Jetties Beach, there's been a bid issue, so that, that is actually off and we hope to bring it back corrected shortly.
Okay. And I, I just wanted to hear about the transfer of ownership of the minute and hour hands from the town clock, from the town. There must be a great story about that.
Well, I don't know how great of a story it is, but it's interesting. As you may recall, in the past month or so, there've been a couple of issues with the current hands on the town clock and one, so without going into all that sort of painful detail, DPW and our town clock caretaker, AmeriClock, both were instrumental in getting those hands fixed. In the process of communications while that all was happening, it came to my attention that the old hands of the town clock were stored in the vicinity of the town clock in a, in a nearby location and it was suggested that they're the property of the town, so we might want to take sort of repossession of them. So they were delivered to my office and they sat under a table for a few weeks until I decided that maybe the NHA would be a better location for them. So the NHA director came over and took a look and agreed to take them over to the NHA offices and they also said though that when they're typically taking ownership of something, there needs to be a documentation process, so that's what, really what this is.
So that's a great story. I'm, I'm of approval of the pending contracts.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Town Managers Report?
Okay, the first item is a presentation from National Grid regarding the Island Ready Electricity Initiative. This has been on your agenda a few times, but the personnel have not been able to make it over due to weather-related issues, but fortunately, they are here now. Mr. Chairman, I was asked a couple of times if there would be public comment on this, accepted on this item because it's listed under the Town Managers Report and I, I've responded, I don't know why there wouldn't be. So I think if anybody from the public does have a question or a comment, they should go through the normal process.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Hi, good evening. My name is Danielle Loretz and I am the Stakeholder Relations Specialist for this project and very grateful to be here tonight. It's been a couple of months that we've been trying to get out here and it seemed like every time that we, we confirmed there was a storm and/or a nor'easter or something that happened that prevented us from coming out here. So again, glad to finally be here. So this presentation is about three major projects that we are going to be undertaking in Nantucket and we've branded them as Island Ready, a Nantucket Electric, Electricity Initiative. And we've done that to really kind of hone in on how these projects are going to help the island. So first, we all know that the current situation in Nantucket is that the island is fed through two undersea cables and then there's also backup generation, diesel generation out by the airport. So Nantucket continues to grow. The demand continues to also grow, especially in the summer here in Nantucket, and it's growing very rapidly and the system that's currently in place is just not built to handle that demand. So how do we come up with a way to handle that demand and to help the island grow with us, or us grow with the island, actually? So you can see here in this chart that the peak demand was as high as 47.8 megawatts in 2016. Again, the system that we have here on the island just isn't built to support that. So failure to upgrade the system here could lead to outages. It could lead to, you know, sporadic lower, you know, when your lights kind of flick on and off or dim, just because we don't have the, the ability to provide what's needed and what's being drawn. So we came up with a comprehensive proposal that's going to help with the island and that's improved redundant power supply, a better protection of the existing electrical infrastructure and improved system reliability and performance. With the redundant power supply, that would be replacing the existing old generator, diesel generator that's out by diesel generator that's out by the airport with an all new state of the art generator. And then also the BASS, the battery energy storage system out there by the airport. To protect, we have flood mitigation projects going on at the Candle Street substation. And then again, improved reliability would be the L1 and L8, new distribution and feeder lines that we would be running through the downtown and then out to the airport. So what does Island Ready do for you? It increases the electricity delivery for parts of the island. It protects the substation from, which sits in a flood area. It increases the resiliency of the system. And it's going to delay the need for that third submarine cable to power the island. So Demands Link, to give you a little bit of history, is where all of this came from. We did a comprehensive study and different, looking at different methodologies, things like energy efficiency programs, non-wire alternatives, energy efficiency, non-wire alternatives, looking at the system and seeing where could we work with both the island as well as the utility industry to try and delay that need for the third cable. Again, this also looked at our generator, which is getting to the end of its useful life. We looked at battery energy storage systems, if there was a need for more redundancy in the distribution system. So that all came from Demands Link where we studied that and we moved forward with what was feasible and what was perhaps not feasible. So that's just to give you a little bit of background on how we do our studies and partner with communities. So we have three components to this project. The flood mitigation, which has two phases. The bunker road generation system, which is the replacement of the diesel generator. And then also the BASS, the battery energy storage system. And then the electrical distribution system, which is a downtown loop system, and then the milestone road system. Flood mitigation, I'm going to kind of go through this a little bit quicker because I'm not sure if everybody wants the amount of detail. But the flood mitigation has two phases to it. The first phase, which some of you who may have driven by the substation have seen, we've put sandbags up there and that's kind of to protect the switchgear. The second is to actually raise the switchgear and relocate the transformer controls from the outside, where they're exposed to the elements, to inside the building where they'll be protected from the elements. So that's kind of what you see at the Candle Street. Don't mind our backpacks that were in the picture. We didn't really realize that when we took the picture. But this is what you can imagine that we've done as the Phase One portion. And you can see that that's finished this spring. And then in March of 2019, we'll be moving to that second phase, which is raising the switchgear and bringing the switchgear inside the substation. So that would be complete in spring of 2020. The generation. So our existing, the existing generator over on Bunker Road has reached its useful life. So what we're doing is we're actually replacing it with two generators that'll actually give 10 megawatts versus the 6 megawatt that the old generator gave. So that means that when you lose power on the islands, that generator can provide a little bit more backup. Or if there's a big demand, a big peak, that generator can help kick in and supply some power to the area. Again, if there's a lengthy service interruption, mobile generators would have to be needed and that could take several days to get those on the island, to get them set up and into the system. So this diesel generator can kind of act as that go between for the outages. And then, so we're upgrading.
Any questions along the way?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
So just a quick question. How much of the, how much, I would have the diesel generator upgrade if that was in place helped in when we had the outage of both cables this winter? How much service would we be able to provide?
I'm going to introduce you to John Skripak, who is the project manager.
I thought the same thing, Jim.
Hi, congratulations, Eric. So the 10-megawatt generator that's going in, it would have been able to help out and provide about 10-megawatts of generation, as Danielle said, to the island. It would not be able to pick up the entire island because you have more load than that, winter, summer, it doesn't matter when. But we would be able to pick up large portions of the island and it would have helped a lot. Long story short.
So is that 50% of the island or 75%? And then how do you decide who gets picked up and not?
It's related to what time of year, first off, because over the winter, you have less people on the island.
Yeah, just talking about the winter.
Right. So for the winter, I would, I guess I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, but I would say at least half the island could get picked up by that generator.
Thank you.
So Phase One, which is the upgrade of the diesel generation, as I said earlier, will be replacing the two existing 3-megawatt diesel generators with a new 10-megawatt diesel generator. Again, that diesel generator is old. It needs to be replaced. And the timeline is, we actually are hoping to start, we've started construction on that already and we're actually going to be complete with that new generator online and ready to go this winter. So you can see on this, the red circle is where those existing two generators are and the blue square is the general area of where that new 10-megawatt generator would be placed. Then we have the battery storage, which is a, the batteries being supplied by Tesla. And this would add additional backup generated, generation as the island grows. National Grid has selected this. This is the first one that we were basically doing with, on the island and as well as throughout the New England area. And it's, the battery plus energy efficiency programs are going to help defer that third cable even more. John Skripak, again, is the project manager for that. And we are hoping to start construction very late spring 2018, more like fall 2018, and be completed by winter of, end of winter 2019 for that. Whoops. That's your general image of what one of these battery energy storage units look like. And that would go, if you look back at that, that would go in the yellow box in that general area. Then we have the final portion of Island Ready, which is distribution line improvements. And that's the L1, which I brought the project manager for that. His name is John Burke. And this would be to, again, improve the reliability of the system because right now, the system says it starts here and it ends here and that's it. And what we're going to be doing with this L1 is creating a loop system. So that just improves the reliability. It lets the energy kind of go more in where it's needed. It will be, it is going to be downtown, so there will be disruption and I'm going to be very upfront about that. However, the team that works for me is working on a very comprehensive outreach plan where we're going to be partnering with city, with the towns, businesses and residents throughout the entire phase. So we can help you to make sure that people know that your businesses are open. If we need to put up signage or if we need to do anything that we can to help, we will. And one of the things that we're willing, you know, we've done for other projects such as the underground transmission line that went up in Salem, Massachusetts, which is another historic area, is we presented to the chamber, we presented to the, we created a working group with the business owners so that we could identify, you know, how best we could help them. And they've actually applauded our efforts up in Salem. So I have no doubt that we can definitely have a positive experience here during that construction. Most of the work will not take place in the summer. It would take place off season, so that's another bonus as well. But we were working on, again, presentations. If we're asked to present to any group, we will happily. Individual meetings with business owners, signage in work areas, literature to hand out to customers, to mail to customers. And also we are utilizing our project website and Twitter to also update people. So that's really your best bet. So that's the map. John, do you want to explain that map?
Hi, John Burke. So what you see in red is what we'll be proposing to add to the system. In black is what's currently existing. You can see it's kind of a sporadic in nature. Some of these manholes, there are existing. Manholes like in front of the Stop and Shop. I walked over on my way over here. It's there. It's too small for us to be able to safely work in. So we're proposing to enlarge them so we can make room for any expansion in the area. Kind of looking ahead to increased forecast for load growth. And then connecting some of the duct, as you can see in this area, just connecting duct into that radial loop system as opposed to, I'm sorry, into a loop system away from the radial system.
I'm sure Erica is going to be and already has been all over this. Right. Will most of this construction be on both lanes, the whole road? Or does it depend on what you're doing?
It definitely depends. You know, in walking those streets, there are some where we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to detour people out of the way, you know, to be able to safely operate down there. But we'll make every effort to allow for traffic to keep moving for both this project and the L8 as well.
I know I'm not asking anything that Erica hasn't already, but just the truck routes, that's where the trucks are going.
And is it sidewalks as well or is it just roads?
There may be some impact to a few sidewalks, but for the majority of it, it will be on the roads. Yep.
Thank you.
So with the L1, L8, we would be hoping to start construction sometime in the fall of 2018 and then be complete by spring of 2020. Again, that all depends on various different things. And again, also, you know, accounting for storms, for summer tourism and things like that.
So borrow the summer then, it would be continuous work in that timeframe?
Barring the summer.
So outside of, so from fall 18 to spring 2020, other than summer, that would be continuous work?
Yeah, if possible, we would start whenever the season, the construction season would allow over here, just so when all the tourism's over in the fall. And then, yeah, be out of here by the time everything starts picking up again.
I just wanted to note that this work is not a done deal. My understanding is that petitions need to come before the board, before the select board. You need to approve this project. And we have staff that has been reviewing plans provided to us by National Grid that we just recently received. And there are some concerns, so.
So is the cost of this borne by the ratepayers or by the shareholders of National Grid?
The ratepayers.
Okay. And what is the estimated cost of all this?
For the L1?
For everything, you're, the whole projects, all the projects?
I'm working on getting that figure. There's been a lot of, it's changed since I originally started the project.
Like an order of magnitude? Is it 1 million, 10 million, 100 million?
I really, I don't feel comfortable giving the number until I've had that chance to have the financial group provide it to me.
And when do you expect to have that?
Probably within the next two to three weeks.
Okay. So maybe there's some way to get that back to this board?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We then have the last project, which is the L8, which is an underground cable that will go from Candle Street Substation out to Milestone Road, again, to meet the demand of that growing area. Work would also occur, again, off season as not to affect the island tourism. It'll be a little bit less disruptive because it's not downtown. And that would be, again, the route that that would take. And again, same construction timeline that we were hoping for the L1 as well, that fall 2018 to spring 2020. So what my team is tasked with is outreach. And we are open to public dialogue, as much input as we can from the public on what you guys would like for us to do to help and ensure that everybody knows what's going on and there's no surprises. And you open your mail because we do do a lot of direct mailing about the projects. So if you see something that says National Grid project information, please open it. One of the biggest things I get is people say, I didn't open that. I'm like, well, it had good information in it. So we would love to host open houses and work with the town to see where's the best place to hold one of those, what's a good time. Door-to-door outreach will occur as well as we get closer towards construction. And usually before an open house, we'll do a door-to-door to remind people that we're going to be having that open house. Again, we do emails, we do snail mail. We have a telephone hotline, a Twitter account, a website. The website is www.islandreadynantucket.com. And our Twitter is IslandReadyMA. I don't have the telephone hotline memorized, but when you go to the website, you'll see all of the information is there. Please call us, email us. We're very, very responsive. I have a great team who's working for me for this project. So with that, any questions, I'm happy to take.
Any questions from the board before we go to the public? Do you have any questions in public? Okay, Carl? Just please state your name.
Carl Borchert, 14 Burn Swamp Lane. I'm just going to read a couple of questions really quickly. The answers don't necessarily have to come from you and your team right now. I'm just going to read them into the record. How do the upgrades impact the expectancy for a third undersea cable in the long term? Are there any future phases planned for the use of wind and solar power generation on the island to contribute to the battery and backup generator systems? How will you address developments such as approval not required, secondary dwellings, tertiary dwellings, and continuing residential and commercial subdivisions, both approved now and coming in the future? What are your strategies for addressing large-scale developments such as Nantucket Cottage Hospital, the new fire station, a new nursing home, and the Richmond residential and commercial development on Old South Road? How well are you in tune with Nantucket's actual rate of growth and development? How do you forecast the rate of demand growth on Nantucket for the next five years? 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years? Basically, a lot of us are concerned about the possibility of a third cable and we really appreciate your efforts to put that out in the future as far as possible. I'm going to give you these questions that you can look at if you'd like, and that's basically it. And I want to thank you for coming out tonight and finally getting out here.
Yeah, my pleasure, yeah. Those snowstorms really hurt us. But yeah, I'd love to take your questions and I would absolutely love to work on getting those answers for you. Thank you.
Lauren Sinatra, Energy Coordinator. So I have a couple of questions for myself and also questions I've received from the public over the last several months. So hopefully you could just address a couple. For the record, how long is, are these infrastructure improvements going to push out the need for the third cable?
From what I have been told, they should be pushing out the need for the third cable at least 15 years.
15 to 20 or so is what I was told.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And what is the useful life expectancy for the generator and the batteries?
20 years.
And does National Grid have a contract with Tesla for operation and maintenance? Will local linesmen be trained to operate that system? Will local linesmen be trained to operate that system, or does it require specialized technicians from Tesla?
Both.
It's going to require combinations of what you just stated. Is there a contract with Tesla to maintain that, the battery system?
Yes.
Okay. And in case of one of the cells failing in the battery system, what is the recycling plan?
Have to take that back.
Okay. And then just echoing what Carl said, if you can confirm that Nantucket's actual rate of growth is incorporated into your forecast, it's not just based on mainland growth records, you're actually?
No, it's Nantucket, it's Nantucket growth.
Great. And then, in terms of what Jim had touched on, the May 13 outage, were the current generators activated during that outage at all?
May 13?
Or March 13?
March 13th, yes. The current generator was used.
Okay. And then you're saying the new generator and the batteries could, in theory, supply 50% of the island with power. How would you prioritize those distribution or electrical load zones?
Anytime that you have a distribution system and you have an outage, I, for instance, I work out of the Brockton office for storm duty, so there's priorities, hospitals, elderly homes, those are all prioritized through the yard that is handling the system and the outage. So before you get to the single homes, you're going to do the firehouse, the police, the police station, the hospital, the elderly home, the assisted living, and facilities like that, your tier-one facilities, before you get to Jane Smith's house on Nantucket Road.
And then, in terms of the cost of the projects, we understand those will be socialized across all ratepayers. Are those increases to our rates already reflected, or will those be future rate increases?
I have to go back to get that answered.
Okay. We'll follow up with all these questions first.
Great questions, Lauren. And Carl.
Great. And just some advice to you. Lauren does a great outreach, has been very successful, so I'm sure you could learn a lot from her in terms of what works on Nantucket.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. State your name.
Colleen Weldon, 14 Baltimore Street. My question centers around the L1 and the L8 construction. Will that be just road closure, or will there be electrical outages during that time period for each of those two projects? As in, will the downtown area be experiencing outages that they will have to close their businesses?
There will be some outages, but we'll coordinate that with the individual business owners and keep it as short as possible. Oh, sorry. Yeah, we'll coordinate that with the individual business owners, just to do the cutover work. But mainly, a lot, a majority of the work can be done non-outage, but to actually switch the cables. Yep, exactly. No, no, nope, nope.
And those outages are short-lived, for hours, or not, or days, or?
Not days, hours.
Okay.
Obviously, it would depend on engineering and the outage coordinators, but those are very strictly followed, and we work one-on-one with whoever it is that's going to be affected. And most of the time, we can do them on off-hours or a weekend. Obviously, Nantucket weekend is big, but if there's a day or a time, if somebody says, you know, "I don't open until 10 o'clock," you know, we might be able to do the outage from 6 to 8, something like that. So like I said, we work very closely with the business that would be affected.
Any other questions from the public or Don? Anybody else?
So Erica, for coordinating those, we'll probably be doing some noise waivers at some point, do you think?
This is the first time that I've heard about night work for this project. So if that is entailed, then yes, it would have to go to the board for waivers in advance. I would say that this isn't only going to affect businesses, it's going to affect residents also. LA is pretty much entirely in a residential district until you get to Pleasant Street. And it's going to be an incredibly disruptive project.
If people know their electricity's going to go off a couple hours, they can deal with it. It's when they don't know it's going to happen, and that's going to be really hard to get everybody.
Yeah, and, you know, the examples I'm giving are from projects that I've worked on previously. Obviously, each project, we, my team is tasked to tailor it very specifically to the area that we're in. So I just don't want to say, "Oh, this is going to be, you know, no big deal, and you're not going to notice anything, and some truck's digging in the street." No, it's a big deal. It's complex, it's going to be disruptive, but that's the whole role that I take on with these projects, is to make it, to guide people through that and to make sure that people are aware of what's going on, why it's going on, how long, and work with the town as well as the individual homeowners, the business owners, and say, "I'm here to help you, I'm here to support you. Tell me how to best do that for you."
Do you have a good way to conceptualize the net benefit of those improvements to people's side when we're talking to people about the scale of disruption? You can also explain why it needs to be done or what the benefits are?
Yes. So on the website, we have what we call fact sheets, and the projects have a fact sheet. We're working on updating two of them, but they have that who, what, when, where, why, and the benefits of the projects. But we're going to be working on articulating that even more throughout the next couple of months, so that people really understand why it's important to get these projects done and why they have to go through that headache of maybe losing some power for a couple of hours, again, notified that that would happen, or the construction vehicles on their roads, that they understand what's going on. Nothing should be a surprise.
Although, and I could be wrong, like with the L8, that's not going to benefit anyone along that construction route. It's to benefit people in Sconset and Pulpus. So they might not be as amenable to it.
I'm used to that. I do transmission projects. We build a transmission line in New Hampshire or in, you know, Wakefield, and it's going to benefit the region. And so you got to explain to Wakefield why they're dealing with the headache of construction, but it's going to benefit not just them, but also how it benefits the system. So I'll be as transparent as I possibly can.
Just since we're talking about this right now, Danielle, can you just note how many construction points are going to be active at the same time?
I can't.
Estimated?
I can't do that right now because I don't have a construction schedule. However, we can work on getting a construction schedule. For the L1 and L8, we wouldn't have that until we know that the project is going forward. And we've got all the permits in hand, and we've hired a contractor, then we get the schedule. But we can absolutely work with you to get those schedules circulated and viewed.
And just in our preliminary meetings with National Grid, they did indicate that they're not going to be in one point, they're going to be in more than one point, working toward each other. So it's going to be multiple active areas. And it's going to be like South Beach Street times 25.
Will there be one person here that Erica or Town Administration or DBW can always call and get on the line?
Yes.
The reason we're asking, you do this all the time, we're asking all these questions because we see what's, you know, what's coming, the phone calls and the emails, and it's all going to go to here or to us. So make sure there's someone, I know there's a hotline, but that seems like a recorded question.
So the hotline is monitored, and the people that, the gentlemen that work for me and support me through this project, they do handle the hotline. It's not something, it's something that we get back to people within 24 hours if they have to leave a message and they didn't get a live, you know, Mike or Phil live on the phone. Same with the emails. However, we will have somebody here who will be a point of contact throughout construction that will be here on the island.
Okay. One more comment, Carl? And then we'll wrap up.
Have you considered going across the harbor from the steamship, connecting into Monomoy Road and going to Milestone Road that way, or is that off the table? There was rumors to that effect a few years ago. Instead of tearing up all the streets in the town core, would you consider going across the harbor and make landfall and go down Monomoy Road or Milestone Road?
So there might have, that might have been something that was looked at. I can get more information on why that route wasn't chosen. I mean, putting in, you know, an undersea cable or an underwater cable is immensely expensive. And it might have been that we were, as a utility, as a regulated company, we're always, we are tasked to find the most economic way to increase the reliability of a system. So if you have a project that you can do and there's two different routes, you're not going to, you're going to look at what's feasible, you know, and what would cause the least disruption environmentally, or multiple permitting or things like that, or if it's going to disrupt shipping or boating and things like that. So there's multiple avenues. I can find out, you know, why that might have been not pursued.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Erica?
I just wanted to say, too, that our group that has previously met with National Grid made that recommendation, so recently.
Okay. Any questions? Phil?
Somebody was taller. I'm Phil Gallagher, and in an earlier lifetime, namely '58, '59, I was a project engineer working on what was going on down at Cape Canaveral, working on something quite different from construction, just designing and making fancy scientific instruments that were going to go on those things. And I've seen the difference between what all the scientists and engineers with all the money and all the expertise and the power and the money of the United States government can do when you're trying to do something brand-new. And when I look at this, there's this one really important question, which wasn't discussed, and I know you might not have thought of it, but boy, I did. Does this battery supply system, is it, what if, as it could, it dies? It becomes not possible to have that system. Tesla goes out of business, what's his, I can't remember the fancy, I can't remember the name of the guy.
Elon Musk.
He dies? You know, he has, so he's no longer the leading spirit. What if there really is something? What happens to this whole project if that system dies? And cannot be produced on time? That's a, it's something you can't know that it could, well, we all know it could happen for any one of many reasons that I am not competent to even think of. But what happens if, because that's new. And we're putting an awful lot of our future on the idea that that system is going to work. Now, if it's something we could just, "God, it's terrible, we'll just have to do without it," but we can do without it because. But if you can't make that kind of an argument and convince folks, we're going to be worried until the system actually exists. The astronauts went up on missiles, seven out of the first 10 missiles died right on the ground. And anybody who had been, that were the ones that were going to carry the astronauts, they'd never been done before. They were new. And we put the best effort, the best money, the best science that we could buy, the country could buy, right into it. Seven out of 10 died.
So Phil, is your question, what happens if the Tesla batteries, if they fail?
No.
Is that your main question?
Yeah.
So the batteries have been used before, the battery systems have been used before. When I said that this is the first one, what I should have articulated is it's the first one of this size in New England. But they've, but the same systems have been used in other places. With respects to the contract to get the battery, if Elon Musk drops dead or gets lost in outer space, life goes on. It's corporate America. You know, if your head person disappears, the next person steps right in line to take over. So there's not a worry as in procuring the battery or the technology of the battery. It's been used before. I don't know if you can say anything else with respects to the contract to get the battery and have it installed?
John Skripak again. The battery, it's a modular design, so it's not just one big battery. There's actually, I believe it's 254 battery packs, so they're going to be in an array. So if one fails, it's about the size of a refrigerator, and they can pluck it out and they can put a new one in. That's what our contract is, is to keep that. We have a capacity guarantee that Tesla will provide a certain amount of battery power for a certain amount of time. And if that fails, then they come back and they fix it.
Thank you. I think that's enough. Thank you, Phil, for that question. Is everybody okay?
Good.
All right.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, we're on to, oh, sorry. That's your still-in-town manager's report.
The next item is review of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Follow-Up. This is a lot of the usual follow-up, and I just wanted to quickly go over that so you all kind of remember it a bit. I usually do a spreadsheet that gets sent out to all the departments saying who needs to do what and by when. So just scanning through the articles that were approved, all of the budget items will get sort of processed and put into place for fiscal '19. All of the capital projects that were approved will now be assigned project managers. The debt exclusions that now have passed as of the election yesterday, same thing, they will get project managers, and those individuals will develop schedules, procurement requirements, borrowing needs, things like that. The one debt exclusion that did not pass, the Old South Road improvements, the board may want to have some discussion about that at some point and maybe meet with the planning board or whoever to regroup on that or break it down more or just have a general discussion. All of the zoning and general bylaw amendments that were approved will be sent by the town clerk to the attorney general's office. All of the home rule petitions that were approved get compiled by my office and sent to our legislative delegation. And the real estate articles will get into a queue for, at some point, coming to the board for determination as to proceeding, since they were authorization articles. We were talking a little bit today at a staff meeting about Article 66, which was the establishment of a parking benefit district. And I think one of the things that might come out of that is a staff-level recommendation to the board at some point as to some potential ways to proceed with that. And that might also be sort of concurrent with the parking demand management program that we have sort of underway at the same time. So those are the primary things.
So do you recommend the board kind of not take any action on, until we hear from? I think that would be a good idea.
I think for now, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, because there's going to be some other things happening.
It's complex.
It is. It's not just totally a standalone. I recently gave you all a kind of an upcoming schedule of things coming up on your agendas, and one of them is going to be the timeline for the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, as well as a special town meeting that we, I think we all know we're going to be facing this fall, specifically for the retail marijuana issue, probably the Harbor Place issue, or perhaps the Harbor Place issue, and maybe one of the things that, any of the items that didn't pass at the annual that people might want to talk about. I don't know what those would be, but those discuss, the timeline discussion will be happening, I think, the first or second week of May.
I think we should work with planning to consider some version of road improvements that maybe was not quite as large as what was proposed.
I'd agree with that.
Anything else about town meeting?
Sorry, I missed it. Did we talk about outreach at all? We had mentioned a system of?
Thank you. So we have a timeline that's established that leads up to town meeting, and there's lots of things that are in there, the public hearings and all of that. And this year, we worked hard to do more public outreach than we have done before. And we are going to be working those things into the timeline so that they're specifically called out and mentioned. And somewhat belatedly, I think we realized that there's even more that we need to do that we didn't think of till kind of a little too late. For example, fact boards of some of these bigger capital projects that probably would have been a good idea, you know, a big board with a photo and a description of the item. have been a good idea, you know, a big board with a photo and a description of the item, and its cost, and its tax rate impact. So we'll definitely work to get those going forward. We did some videos this year, think we could start those a little earlier, and they could be better, although we did get a lot of great feedback on them. And, do we talk about, I feel like there's one more thing, but I can't remember what it was.
Someone had mentioned the ballot questions are confusing, because the amounts aren't on there, trying to explain, there's, the regulations are law, you can't...
Yep, the, if need be, Brian can answer questions about this, but debt exclusions are, the wording of a debt exclusion, with the exception of the specific description, is laid out in statute. So for a debt exclusion, the amount is specifically not mentioned. That's an amount that's approved at the town meeting, and that has to do with the borrowing and the debt service numbers that aren't known at the time of the ballot question. But you're right, every year, someone asks a question about where's the amount, how do I know what number I'm voting on? And it's, it's tricky, because there's also campaign finance laws that don't allow towns to spend public funds to promote questions. We can certainly put out neutral information. It's just, you know, you're just gonna be very careful about how you do it, and when you do it. So that's something that we can try to work harder and better on, about getting people to maybe understand why those numbers aren't in there, or have, I mean, I think we really did try right at the end there, because if you do things too early, nobody pays attention to it. And Florbia did a great job the weekend before the election, getting out information of the, about the tax rate, and what the cost of the projects were, but we know not everybody is on social media, so that does go to, you know, it does not go to everybody.
Could we do, you know, the synopsis of the ballot questions beforehand, instead of town council, to make sure that it's not violating anything?
We could, and the board could also have a discussion about it at the week, the meeting prior, perhaps. That's sort of tricky, depending on the timing of town meeting, because you didn't have a meeting last week.
Right.
But maybe the prior week, and just go through more specifically the ballot questions. And board members may publicly support ballot questions. It's the expenditure of public funds by staff. If you designate us to do some kind of analysis of, of a ballot question, like what is the tax rate on it? We can do that. But I can't go around, I can't take time during the day to say to people, you should vote yes on this.
Right. But the ballot questions really could show the process it's went through, whether, maybe it went through Capcom, and it'd be DC, and there was a public hearing here, just really showing that it just wasn't, you know, you walk in to vote, and maybe didn't, it didn't come across your eyes, just to give me a little bit of extra information.
Yeah.
It would help. Having one of those big boards out there, it's not a ton of money, and town council could approve it. I love all those ideas.
And can we have those boards out there on the election day, rather than just the town meeting day? Is that allowed? Is there some kind of a voter's guide we could do?
That does get tricky. There, as you know, there was a voter's guide for town meeting, which had all of the tax rate information in it.
Right.
But that's a question to ask. Yep, I can double check on that.
Just for the actual voting day, because there's a lot of people who don't go to town meeting that go to the polls.
Yep.
I really like this timeline idea, because it's not, you know, running around last minute, trying to get more public outreach done.
Mm-hmm.
Right, Phil? At the last minute.
Anything else want to tell me? All right, thank you. The next item is the monthly town management activities report. I emailed this to you all over the weekend, and I have sort of reconfigured it a bit to make it less a listing of day-to-day town administration activities, and more what the real big major projects are, that probably have some involvement by the board. Is that, thank you. The first one, and this is not really in any particular order, and it's not probably everything, but I thought it was the things that were most currently being worked on. Harbor Place is an active project. We have a transportation center study work group. Funding has been provided by the owners of the Harbor Place properties, for the town to use to engage a transportation consultant, which we did several months ago, to look at the feasibility of an intermodal transportation center at the Harbor Place site. They are looking at the center, including a parking garage, they are going to be looking at what number of spaces would fit in there, and maybe most importantly, they're going to be looking at the financial feasibility of it from the standpoint of the town, how would it be constructed, how would it be funded ongoing, who would operate it, that sort of thing. So the transportation center study work group has been, has met several times, and they have another meeting in a couple weeks. There are two board members on that group, and at the last meeting, I think we had a third who just attended.
And they're post, they're posted meetings, and we welcome people from the public to come.
Thank you, yes. We also have a negotiating team, which also has a couple of board members on it, as well as the chairman of the finance committee, myself, the deputy director of planning, and our culture and tourism director is helping out with the administration of the work. We've been spending some time developing potential terms for an agreement with the Harbor Place owners. We are meeting with them, I think not, I think next week, and be reporting back to the board in executive session, because it's a real estate matter that is exempt from the open meeting law, but obviously, as we have information that can be made public, we will make it public. We have another active project, the coastal resiliency plan. We've had a number of meetings with our consultants. We hired a firm called Malone and McBroom several months ago, to help us prepare a coastal resiliency plan. And they are coming to review with the board how that is going, and what it will contain, and all its components, and things like that, at your meeting on April 25th. A small staff group is meeting with the Nantucket Coastal Conservancy next week, to hear some ideas that they have about the public process for this plan. And Remain has expressed interest in being part of that effort as well. So we'll include them. We are going to start preparing for some upcoming public forums that we're going to be having in preparation for the plan in May and July. And we've also, kind of in connection with this, applied for a stormwater management grant through a FEMA, I think it was a FEMA program.
So have we executed an agreement with the consultants to do the coastal resiliency plan?
Yes.
Could we see that agreement?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
SBPF, Wisconsin Beach Preservation Fund, as we all know, that is also an active project. Staff-wise, we're working on updating our alternative access plan, and identifying potential costs associated with it. Now, as you know, we already have an alternative access agreement with some property owners in the event of the failure of a particular section of the road, and that is triggered upon the failure of the road. But staff is also looking at some figures that we came up with five or so years ago, as to what it would take to relocate the road, including all of the utilities that would need to be relocated, and getting the costs updated on that, and determining if we need to do any other engineering work at this time for that. Strategic planning, as you all know, we've been well underway with that, and we're meeting with some of the departments that will be involved with some of your goals, and you all have another session about this on April 24th with the department heads, so that is underway. Staff is working on what we're sort of tentatively calling a government 101 program. This would be a kind of a pilot. The town of Barnstable, for example, has a kind of a citizens' government academy, similar to our citizen police academy. It's a, it's a multi-week program, and it involves people applying to attend the program. And once a week, a number of departments come in and explain their operations, take people on tours, hear questions, they probably get homework, things like that. So we'd like to eventually, if we can, move up to something like that, but for the time being, I think we're gonna work on a pilot program, to which we invite specific individuals to help sort of critique how we're doing it, and help us, give us some feedback, so that we can develop a more solid program going forward. Our Island Home. I think you all know that some months ago, you had a vote to see what it would take to develop a new or renovated facility at our current site, based on the action at last year's town meeting. And because we've been in the process of hiring a new administrator, that was a bit put on hold, and we're resurrecting our scope of services for something like that now. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with some, some town staff, as well as chairman of finance committee, and Dave Fredericks, who had been helping us with this early on, to determine what our scope should be for this. And there are a lot of issues that go into determining what we can do at the current site, not the least of which is a determination of need from the public, from the Department of Public Health. We were also waiting for a letter from the Department of Public Health, that we talked with Senator Seer and Representative Fernandez about several months ago, which we don't, which we have not, we wrote them a letter, asking them, could they tell us what might be required if we were to build a new or renovated facility on the current site? And we have not received a response yet, but we are told it's coming. So that was something else we were waiting for. The parking demand management project, you all voted back in November to engage a consultant to help examine options for parking demand management. And your vote did specifically say that the town would pay for that, however, in subsequent conversations, Remain, I believe, is, is going to be offering to pay for that, and using the consultant that the town has already identified as the one that we want to use. So that will be coming to you very shortly, hopefully next week.
But just going back to the benefit district, that's gonna be in tandem?
That will be in tandem.
Okay, so I just, that's why I asked the, so we're waiting for your recommendations on the benefit district, before we embark on the demand management consultation?
Yes, basically. There may be some concurrent things that are happening. Okay, valet parking at the National Grid site for 2018. When I put this list of items together, that was uncertain, and we were not getting a clear yes or no from National Grid, as to whether or not that site would be available. I think that we were told tonight, it is highly unlikely that it will be available. In fact, we should plan on it not being available, because they are going to be, as we heard about this project that they're doing, they may be using some of the site for that, and it is not likely to be available. So I had a note on here, does seek input from select board as to need for alternate location. We've had some internal discussion about where a potential alternate location could be for daytime valet parking, and there is no real town-owned viable location for that, unless we were going to clear out, say, the town lot down on Washington Street. And I don't know that we're prepared to do that. Anybody else? Although, the valet, we are gonna need to get in touch with them about this, but they potentially, if willing, can continue the evening valet with the use of the Jetties parking lot, which they do now. So hopefully, that aspect of the program would continue, but I'm not sure we would be able to continue the daytime.
That's gonna be a huge loss.
I agree.
I know we've talked about, we've called it a pilot, but we've been doing something for three years. It becomes part of the infrastructure of parking on the island, so, and it came as a surprise to me, I didn't know that this was a possibility when we heard this last week. We just had the National Grid folks here, wish we, we wish we should have, we could have discussed this with them, but...
The availability of the lot has been somewhat uncertain, I would say, since day one, and that's why it was initially called a pilot program. They told us last year they weren't sure if it would be available.
I understand, but in terms of public perception...
Yes, I agree, yep.
So I think, I'd suggest you continue to look for a way to replicate the, exist the program we've had for three years. I don't have a solution, but I think that's, I'm not sure...
I think unless we...
I think there's a need, you know, if you're seeking input from the board as to a need, personally, I think there's a need for an alternate location.
I don't think we disagree with that, it's just a matter of locating where that would be, and unless we're prepared to acquire some property in the next two months, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a downtown location.
Yeah, this, go ahead, Rita.
I was just gonna ask, they're going to be using it for staging for the project that they're...
It sounds like it, and they're doing some work to the substation.
And there's no, I don't know if there's a possibility of having an alternate staging location, if we might be able to sort of swap that way? I don't know if that's possible at all.
We can continue asking if they think there's any possibility for that, but I think the proximity of the substation and the proximity of their project makes it, as they were saying, they try to do this at an economic, in an economic way for the ratepayers, and having a staging site somewhere farther out would add to the cost.
It's late to game, but maybe it's worth asking. Also, maybe asking the valet, the company, they're really good at seeing areas and spaces, they're better at it than we are. They might have something like, hey, could we use this? Maybe it's private land, I don't, I don't know. But they are good at that, that's what they do.
We'll certainly talk to them about it.
Yeah.
Lastly, I think you, maybe you all have read a bit, there's been some articles in the newspapers about seasonal vacation rental tax legislation, and this involves expanding the room occupancy tax to seasonal rentals, specifically Airbnb. There's a House version of this bill, and there's a Senate version of the bill, and they, what I'm told by our legislative delegation is that at this point, there is obviously the effort between the House and the Senate to figure out a compromise and move it, move it ahead. Janet has been keeping track of it, and we've been monitoring of it, but we haven't really figured out what economic impact it might have on us, and there would, in all likelihood, be a town meeting vote required to adopt anything.
I had one thing, I wondered if that's on your list somewhere, and that's the, the work that's been done by the government study group? Is that something you monitor, or is that somebody, somebody else monitors that?
I really have not been monitoring that, although I am going...
I wonder if there's a way to get an update from them?
We could invite them to come, sure, yep. I'm going to a meeting of theirs sometime soon, they, well, I can tell you a couple quick things. They had a meeting this week, I believe, with someone from town council's office, with Lauren Goldberg, about how charters work, and that sort of thing. Thank you. And I'm going to a meeting sometime soon about some ideas of town admin. I'm gonna pass along with them some items that I think they could be looking at, like updating the town code, and looking at how many committees we have, just things like that. But I can try to get their chairman in to give you guys a...
If there's not much report, that's fine, I mean, it's...
I'll ask him, maybe he can give me something in writing.
Even in writing, yeah, thank you.
That is it for town manager's report.
Okay. Right, move on.
Could I, I'm sorry, could I just ask maybe for a tiny little bit of feedback? So this, this town management activities report is different somewhat from what I had been doing. Is this more helpful?
Yes.
Yes, much more. I think for the public, for the board.
I don't wanna bore you.
Does it help you?
Actually, it did help me.
Good, yeah.
Because I, and if there's any feedback that any of you want to give, you know, while I'm doing this monthly, that it would be helpful. So yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent items, we have a gift acceptance, natural resource department.
Motion to accept.
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to accept, second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. The resignation and affordable housing trust fund.
Motion to accept the resignation, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Citizen department request, the request for approval of change of manager of seasonal wine and malt beverage general on-premise license for Nantucket Golf Management Incorporated, DBA CSGonsit Golf Course. Do we have any, any questions for Amy?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. On to public hearings. Okay. The public hearing to consider an application for alteration of premises of annual wine and malt beverage restaurant license for 45 Surfside Road, LLC, DBA 45 Surfside.
Good evening.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
This application is, as you said, for an alteration of premises for a liquor license at 45 Surfside. They currently have an annual beer and wine license that was approved in 2016. As far as comments at that time, their original application was for all alcohol license at the time the board... At the time, the board requested that they change that application. Possibly they would consider a beer and wine, but did not feel it was appropriate. The location is directly across from the elementary school on Surfside Road. They did come back and alter the request to beer and wine, and it was approved with the contingency that it would not be served outside on the patio. It was for indoors only at that time. So they have come back now, have been open for a little over a year now. Opened December 2016, and would like to extend these premises to the patio area, which is directly outside. I included photos for you to take a look at that, which shows the location of the patio right out front there. The seats, as you can see, the school across the street. As we put in the comments, there is objection from the police chief as he had objected to the original application for liquor in such close proximity to a school. One thing, I think, I don't believe, I neglected to include a list from the state that they give us as far as patio guidelines, just quickly. And these, this facility does kind of meet all of these requirements. Basically, the state is going to ask you to, the application to extend the premises must describe the area in detail, including dimensions, seating capacity, maximum occupancy, which this does. The premises itself must be enclosed by fence rope or other means to prevent access from a public walkway. Again, this porch does have that as well. The outdoor area must be contiguous to the licensed premises with either a clear view of the area from inside, which this does. Alternatively, the licensee may commit to providing management personnel dedicated to the area, which we would request should this be approved. And the licensing authorities, the board, should consider the type of neighborhood and potential for noise in the environment. And it's preferred that the alcohol is served to patrons who are seated at the tables and where food is also available. Again, that is the case for this establishment. So I would just say the recommendation is not to extend it from the police chief based on those previous concerns. In the history that they've been there this past year, we have not received complaints, or I've not dealt with them in any way in that sense. It's been, you know, good place for food, and they've, they've done well for that. So I'll leave it there for any questions.
This is a public hearing. Would you guys like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Well, we would like to serve beer and wine during the summertime.
State your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Rebecca Merzinger. We would like to serve during the summertime. As far as the proximity to the school, students are not going to be in school. They'll be out doing what they do during the summertime. So that shouldn't be a problem. We do serve food and that sort of thing. Our customers are families, mom, dad, a couple of kids. It's been a problem, or for us, it's a problem that mom and dad come in and they want to get a sandwich and a drink, maybe a glass of wine or beer. And we have to tell them, you'll have to drink that inside. So then they say, well, no, thank you. Well, okay, so they're going to go sit outside, but they're not going to have that beer or wine. So for a business like ours that does a lot of business during the summer, but we promised that we would be open all year, and we've kept our promise, and we have been open all year, the winter is long. It's a long winter. And so it would be very helpful to have that generation of income to get us through that, that long season. So we would appreciate that. We work very hard. We have a fantastic staff, all TIPS certified, very strict. I am there all the time. I watch everything. No one gets past us. So we take it very seriously. So I want you all to know that.
And my name's Portia Merzinger, and I just want to state the fact that in response to the school being across the street, the fact that we close at 2:00 PM, so the kids are still in school, I don't know what time they get out, 2:20 or whatever, we close before school lets out.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here to speak on this?
Okay. Cool. Can we ask questions? So my recollection, I said on the board when you came last time that your, your business model really emphasized the bakery. And I'd like to, so that was at least what, in my mind, that was really the business you were trying to go for. And it's, what's been your experience in terms of bakery versus cafe in the year that you've been open?
Well, we are a bakery café. It's very similar to businesses that you would see in Cambridge and Boston. If you're familiar with Tate or you're familiar with Flower Bakery, same sort of thing, where it's food and bakery. It's very hard, you know, these days to have a business that's strictly bakery. You would have to be a huge establishment, I owned a huge establishment before that, cranking out baking products to, to make it, especially on Nantucket. So that, that would be a very difficult business to be in. But to have a bakery café, that makes more sense. You have other revenues, you have drinks, food. And of course, I have my bakery products too. I'm very proud of them. I think I do a nice job. I've found that many of my customers are very happy with them. But I, having one or the other would be difficult. Having both together is perfect. Having the addition of the wine and beer makes it even better because that income is going to keep us going through the year. It's, it's really important.
I have two questions for Amy. Didn't, just on the original licenses, I remember talking about dinner service. What does their license say in terms of hours they can be open?
They can be open, you know, I think by the state, we can't, they can serve liquor till 11, and we can't really fudge with that too much unless there are specific instances. So they could stay open until one, yeah.
I remember originally you had talked about serving dinner, and I know you're not right now.
Right.
But.
They could, they, they are allowed to.
My second question is, I mean, I believe that our, that we have either annual or seasonal liquor licenses, and it's a set amount of time.
Correct.
There's not a provision where you can say just July and August.
No.
So how?
That's, that would be, you know, that was the first I heard of that. But I mean, people aren't going to sit out on the patio probably in February. So I mean, it would be very seasonal. They can serve alcohol annually, all year round, but.
It would be during school. I mean, school doesn't get out till June 20th, and it goes back right after Labor Day.
Correct, so it's going to be when, you know, weather is good for that. So we, it, it would be hard for us to limit that on an annual license.
Right now, we're closed at 2:00. So students are in school, so it's not really a problem. As far as dinner, we've decided that we're not going to have dinner service. The location is not, does not lend itself really for dinner. The people are mostly in town, that sort of thing. Kids are the babysitters, and parents are out having a great time at another establishment. So we've decided that breakfast and lunch works for us.
Amy, have we ever had a scenario where we've asked for screening of some sort?
You mean a screen on the?
On the deck. I'm just, because there was an issue, someone said that you can see the patio from the school.
That was, oh, in the high school. There's, you know, downtown, we do that as far as having some sort of foliage, like Grayden House and some other folks where we've had, because of it's right on a sidewalk or street. They meet the minimum requirement of the state as far as it being roped off or fenced off or that sort of thing. So, you know, whether you put something up, I don't know if that would deter it. It's, it's just the location, you know? And just, you know, from the police perspective, setting a precedent for service, where they're just going to be consistent with saying that close to a school will never approve. But it's up to you to determine if that's okay for that neighborhood.
And the photo clearly shows you that it's, the school is right there.
Correct. And hence, that was the original objection. But again.
I think the police chief, he was against the, any, any license.
Absolutely, it's very consistent.
It was an accommodation to them, we.
Correct. This location and one other location the high school students frequent, both of those.
Yeah, okay.
I would find it difficult to directly oppose the chief on this one when it was considered an accommodation from the start. I don't know if there's no, if this is setting a precedent. I definitely would be concerned. But if there's a screening option, that would be my only. But if we haven't done it before, again, it would be a precedent.
Do we need to close the public hearing, or do we? I think we're going to close the public hearing now, and then we'll discuss.
Okay.
Okay, that's okay. Just want to make sure I'm doing it right. Any comments, or it's a pleasure of the board?
I'm just, I'm just not adhering any way that we can actually put limitations that are consistent with their business.
It would be difficult to, to monitor that in some respects. I mean, the setup is fine for this in a normal instance. You know, they've been a good business. I can't say that there's any reason that they're going to have a nightclub out there, and that's why we object to it. They have been a good business, and, you know, no objection to that at all. But we can't, from this perspective, say that.
And I think, you know, people go into business with the knowledge of the constraints that are there. People know that there's a constraint of serving alcohol where kids, you know, close to a school. So that was the comes with, I think, so. I think we were accommodating to begin with.
One question for you, Amy. If we were to deny this, would we have to have certain reasoning? That's connected to the ABC regulations? Just want to be careful there.
Absolutely, and, you know, this would be a similar instance to, you know, when you approve a liquor license, you need to also approve that it's not going to be detrimental to the activities of either a spiritual location or school. So you'd have to not only approve, you would have to also say, vote, that it's not going to be detrimental to the activities of the school. So that's a similar type of vote. And in here, in the guidelines, they say that the licensing authorities should consider the type of neighborhood and the potential for noise and such in those environments. So that is one of the guidelines for it. So it does.
I thought your question was on denial.
Well, yeah, you answer that kind of backwards, but.
It's always good to have, you have to have a background for that denial.
Right. You can't just deny it and not have a reason.
Correct, correct. It can't just be, you just don't feel like it.
If I could say that it would be limited when school was not in session, I would consider that, but hearing that I cannot do that, I'm, it makes. Oh, we could?
I don't, I can't, I don't want to say absolutely, positively. It's not something I've addressed to the state.
Given the facts we have here, we have to make a decision.
Right, yeah. It would, it would be tough to say.
Could we hold it?
I can certainly find out.
Because I'm a lot more comfortable if school's not in session.
In July and August.
It's a totally different thing, but it would literally just be July and August.
Erica.
I know you already closed the, the public hearing, but do you want to make a motion to reopen the public hearing and continue it?
Well, I'll try a motion. I will, I make a motion that we deny the request based on the police chief's recommendation and, and based on the proximity of the school.
Is there a second for discussion? Okay, hearing no second.
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just, I want to, I want to be operating with all the information if we can get it. So could we continue the public hearing till the 25th?
You can make a motion to do that.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
So could you tell us what you're going to do? Earlier, I thought you said you didn't have the leeway, so just what?
Well, I want to discuss it with the state before I say definitively that I can do so.
What are you going to ask them?
Ask them if that's some sort of limit we can put on the license as far as a timeframe. Generally, it's not, I mean, a license is annual or a seasonal type of thing. But patio and outdoor service is something that they look at a lot closer. And that should we have some sort of concerns and want to put some sort of restraints on it, they would advise me to that. And I would talk to legal for that as well.
And I think it'd be helpful to give Amy some guidance. So when she comes back, it's not, well, we don't like that. I've already, I've stayed in my position, but those of you who are considering that may want to give her some specific guidance.
I think that's, that's the main question, is, is it possible to limit it to times of year when there is no school? And just make sure that there isn't school summer session or anything like that.
Do we have summer sessions there?
There are some summer activities in the school.
I mean, it's a school.
And there's camps.
Fields.
We'd have to know what those are, I guess.
Right.
You get, so you talk to the school and find out what the summer schedule is?
I mean, there's, there's, I would imagine there's always going to be some sort of activity. The fields are there, and that's, that sense, but I can certainly.
And that's where it's, for me, it's hard to cut, you know, so.
We have a second on the, on the motion. What is the motion?
To continue the public hearing till April 25th.
Do we need to add anything on there, or do you have it?
Do you understand what we're looking for? What kind of child activities are there in the summer specifically? What times? And what the ABCC would say about limiting patio service to when school's not in session?
Correct.
Do you feel that's enough time for you to get those?
Yeah, I can do that tomorrow.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we also ask the police chief to come when we bring this back?
Absolutely. He was just, I'm sorry, out of town for something today, so, absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. All right, moving on to public hearing to consider application for change of license category from seasonal wine beverage package store license to wine and malt beverage, beverages, package store license for Bartlett Ocean View Farm.
Yes, so Bartlett's currently only has a wine-only package store off-premise license. They would like to add malt beverages to that to sell beer and those types of beverages as well. Again, we don't have any objection to the extension. What we say is, in these cases, is that what's outlined as far as the sales area and the storage area is what they must keep to. If there's any expansion and suddenly all of Bartlett's Farms is going to be a package store, whatever that is, they need to come back with that. For instance, there's cases where maybe on a busy weekend, someone has an 18-wheeler behind their store filled of alcohol. You can't do that. What your storage and your selling area is on the license is what must be kept too. So if they were to, that's the only thing we would ask, if that changes and they expand even further, they would have to come back and indicate that. Otherwise, we have no objections.
Open a public hearing. Is there anyone from public like to speak on this?
Somebody from, is the applicant here to speak?
John Bartlett, One Mothball Way. I'm here to represent Bartlett Farm in this application. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Could you just for me, talk about the area and what it might look like in terms of? So I see here, it's hard to read, 16 by seven feet?
So the existing area is to the right of where that two-door fridge is shown. And so the, the area that we're adding is really just the space for the refrigerator.
I think you're looking at, that's the storage area. So these are the checkouts. This is the checkout area. Right now, this is where the wine is.
Okay.
And this is, John, is this the fridge?
Yeah.
The beer?
Okay.
And we've included some additional storage in the basement just to facilitate deliveries and.
That's where I was looking at. So it's one refrigerator, it's for the?
Yeah, it's a two-door refrigerator.
Okay, all right, thanks. I know we, just, we spent a lot of time talking about the, at 167, you know, like the, we, you know, we waited, we had to walk on calls, so. We won't make you do that today, but we, that's why.
We knew that ahead of time, so he was very good in his diagrams.
Is there, anyone else here from the public like to speak on this? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd make a motion that we approve the application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Number three has been moved.
We have to continue it.
A motion to continue.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You have to open it and then continue it?
We have to open it first, okay. Open a public hearing for, to consider application, new entertainment license for Bartlett's Ocean View Farm.
And I make a motion that we continue the public hearing to what date?
May 16th.
May 16th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Selectman's report.
You're doing great. You open and close the public hearing.
A review of revised policy for banner, banners hung on light poles on Main Street. How do we feel about this?
So the last time that we discussed this, which was. So the last time that we discussed this, which was last year, it was July 19th. We had brought a revised policy too, and it garnered a lot of discussion, and it was ultimately not approved, though there was a moratorium placed on the banners, until it came back in a revised fashion. So I went through your ideas and your, your wants while reviewing all the rest of the information that I presented to you last year and came up with what I think is what you were striving for. All the red, all the strikeouts and underlined is new language. This here, the number of banners to be displayed per year is highlighted because there was no number given in the motion, just that it be limited. So I threw three out there as a, as an option. I'm not married to that in any way. The one concern was the way that the banners had been displayed because it wasn't consistently displayed. I did do some research. Amy helped me with that. And we found a bracket system that seemed like it would work. I did call this company, and I don't know that we can make every person use this bracket system, but I think they should use something like this if it's not this.
If you want them to do it, they'll do it.
And just because it'll be more professionally hung and it'll look better for the town. One question, one complaint I did get when this came up was that somebody beaned their head on one of the banners last year because they were set too low. And I did not get a chance to address that in here, but we may want to also put a height limitation on how low the banners can be hung so that it's not an accident waiting to happen for pedestrians.
Got to make sure Peter Brace can get through there.
So I present this for your editing pleasure or whatever you want to do with it.
Want to have a comment?
And I do, did want to say though, I know that, I think we have one, one applicant kind of waiting in the wings, which is Mariah Mitchell, who's celebrating their 200th anniversary this year. So that's why we.
And it's not 40 other applications and?
There is none that I am aware of, but again, we can limit it to one a year. I mean, it's really your choice.
Jim, you had a question?
So I, what I do is I tighten up the, where it says banners are not meant to be used as a fundraising tool?
Yes.
I would tighten that up to something like banners may not promote or whatever fundraising events.
Okay.
That's just me personally.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, it's promoting a specific entity. You want to, you know, if it's arts.
The organization.
The organization, that's what we do. Because that's where it gets tricky. Who do you say no to? Who do you say yes to?
What does changing organization to entity do?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Originally, it was festival, and then I brought back organization, but it wasn't accepted, so I.
To the board?
Throw out entity. So again, I'm not married to any language. If you would rather it say organization versus entity, that is fine.
No, that was just.
I think entity was your idea.
Definitely. I would like, I think, having, being as descriptive as possible in the poll banner bracket system, giving some guideline measurements, whatever it is saying, these are the measurements, you can find them here or similar. I think being as specific as possible about that would be important.
Should we say something like nonprofit or government entity? Because at some point, we won't, we will, as a town, want to put up a banner?
We could change the rule then.
We might as well throw, contemplate it now.
I think government can do anything.
Aren't we exempt?
It says nonprofit.
Did we specify the loca, it says historic district? Did we talk about Main Street?
The policy is Main Street.
Okay.
It's specific to Main Street. They wouldn't be allowed anywhere else downtown. It's in the, it's in the, the heading. Policy for banners hung on light poles on Main Street.
Okay.
So that would be the only location that they would be allowed.
I'd rather do our time now, get the specifics down. And then when the applications come, it's very easy versus spending time on it later.
Are the banners for Mariah Mitchell, are they tied to a specific event? Or is it, it's for the whole year?
I haven't seen an application for them. Amy might be able to answer that. Again, they haven't submitted anything formally to my knowledge because there has been a moratorium in place.
Okay.
I would assume it's just advertising their 200th anniversary.
Yes, correct. And that's what most of them have been on their anniversaries. Film Festival, Wine Festival, 20th year.
I think the big issue last year was when the MPT was advertising the antique show.
So in the case of when it's an ongoing celebration of a year, seven days banners must be removed and last day of the event. It's just whatever week they decide is the week that they want, that's going to constitute.
The week that they request, correct?
Janet.
Janet Schulte, Office of Culture and Tourism. I've been working with the Mariah Mitchell Association to promote the celebration of the 200th anniversary of Mariah's birthday, which is August 1st. So my sense, it would be around that week and that time period. And it would really be focused on Mariah Mitchell's 200th birthday and not so much the association.
Thanks, Janet.
I would like to see it not be tied to any festival or any, you know, if it's Arts Week and 20 nonprofits are benefiting from that, or if, you know, it's something bigger, I don't know how to, I don't know how to say that.
Can I make one comment? It came up when this originally came up, and I got legal advice on this as far as what you can really say in here. It's that time, place, and manner are the three things that you can legislate. Content is, is difficult. Certainly, you don't want something to advertise and be a promotion, but we just steer clear from saying anything that would direct what the content can be on a legal perspective.
Right.
So does that mean defining what special is, as in it has to be?
Yeah, it just, be careful with that. It does, time, place, and manner is generally what the law is going to tell you that you can legislate. But yeah, you certainly could say, you know, no advertising and that sort of thing. Just don't specifically say words or content too much.
So I'm just wondering, just to make sure that it's clear whether or not the maximum period of time that, if there's some way to word it so that it doesn't have, it suggests that it's tied to a specific event? So it's more just that the seven days that they choose? Because for Mariah Mitchell, there may not be a specific event or.
Well, they're celebrating her birthday.
The birthday, so. And I suppose as long as that's applicable to anyone else.
Who first brought this banner policy forward, it was for their 25th, 20th anniversary of the film festival. So to say a festival couldn't do it, I mean, it's your call, it's your policy. It's ultimately what you, how you want this to work going forward.
I just want to make it as clear as possible, as we can, so we're not.
So it was a 10-year anniversary worth of banner?
Right, 15, 20.
Right now, we have five in there as they can apply more than every five years.
How do you guys feel?
Well, I'm, I guess I'm worried about a little bit, just getting into, if we limit it to three, then we at least have to have an understanding of what special means, but does that get into?
No, I mean, certainly time, place, and manner and how many you want and that sort of thing is not, you know. But it gets tough when you start getting very, very specific. It's, you know, yeah.
Do we need to put a date in there that says we need all applications of this in by?
I mean, that's always helpful.
February 1st?
You know, but by, you know, by April 1st or March or April. So then you have that time, March probably. So then you have time to do the hearing and that sort of thing, and you can review all applications at once.
The earlier the better, so that the organization.
That's probably a good idea, then you have that time.
And it's not a public hearing, it would just be a regular agenda. So you want to put a dead, a deadline for the calendar year event applications in there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Because we'd like to be able to look at them all at the same meeting, I would think.
Decide which.
Or if there was more than.
Yeah, in case there's more than three.
Yeah.
What date do you want that to be?
February 1st?
March 15th.
March 15th.
March 15th?
Is that fine?
That's fine by me, yeah.
It's after school vacation. But not, but we would have to do some provision for this year.
And the only thing, Rita, about being very specific about size is that there may, there may be some, I mean, I could only, your policy states a specific size of the banner. I couldn't find a bracket system that fit that perfectly. The closest I could get was this 24-inch, so I don't. It was difficult for me to put specifics in it. That's why I just said similar to model, blah, blah, blah.
It still has to be approved by the sign advisory too, after us. That was one of the things we were trying to change is make sure we're okay with it first before you even go through the final design.
So they don't expend all that time and money.
And they purchase the brackets, they put it up, they, right. And if they don't do it right, then DBW gets a call to.
Take them down.
Fix it.
Or take them down, potentially.
Any other language needs to be in there, if it's not?
Do we, does, I mean, we can wordsmith this, but could it be any, do we need to say it's an island nonprofit entity in Nantucket? Or an entity that's, you know, located on, in Nantucket? Pardon?
Based in Nantucket.
I don't know, some word that, I don't know what. It may not be that important.
Yeah, you know, I was thinking that as I was sitting there, but two of the entities that have already done so, Wine Festival, Film Festival, are not based on Nantucket. Hospital did it too as well. Arts Festival did it for years, which is how this started. So you do have Nantucket festivals, but their location is not necessarily on Nantucket. So just for thought.
And the hospital is partners.
Yeah, but it's still.
Technically, they're run out of different states or locations.
With some affiliation to Nantucket? I mean, I think that this has clarified a lot of what we're worried about.
And again, if they're going to be coming to you in a batch, so if you see something that you don't feel is significant enough to be part of it, discard it.
Yeah.
Oh, this is great.
So this sets us up to be able to deny something legally, it's fine. The way this is written with the edits.
And does the board all right with that first?
Yes.
Change I made or suggestion I made?
Okay.
Do you want me to make more additional changes and we can bring it back?
No, I think.
And did you want to limit the number of banners to three? Or do you want to do it for, for two?
Three?
Or whatever.
I'm fine with three. We good with three?
Yeah, I'm good with three. That sounds like good.
Do you need a motion to accept this policy?
With the changes noted, sure.
Make a motion.
If we do March 15th, can we say this year they're due by May 15th? I mean, we, there's, I just want to give people a little time.
Well, we've heard from most of the main events a long time ago, so I think we have a probably good idea. Yeah.
Okay. We can, yeah, we can make a note in the motion that this year, any banner applications would be due to the, our office by May 15th or something.
And do we, do you think we'll have more than Mariah Mitchell?
I, I, I really don't. That's the only one I've heard of, and no one else has an anniversary that I believe.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the revisions as well as the amendments that we mentioned today with the date of March 15th for subsequent years and May 15th this year as the application deadline.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Erica, for doing all that work.
Sure.
Okay, discussion regarding select board meeting agenda, structure, and schedule. Want to spitball ideas?
I have one idea. Wonder about the possibility of scheduling joint meetings with planning that happen quarterly or twice a year. Quarterly sounds reasonable, but I don't know how others feel about that. And I think in light of, in light of our strategic plan and in light of the infrastructure decisions and spending that we're going to have to be making, I think it would be ideal to have very open lines of communication, know where we're at. So that's one thought.
Could I give just a little bit of background?
Yeah. Please.
It, let's see, how can I start here? The board's agendas have sort of evolved over the years as, you know, it's probably normal. When Mike Loackey was on the board, he really set in motion a stricter scheduling protocol so that the board would be focused on certain types of things on certain Wednesdays. So for example, we went for a long time with citizen and departmental requests being the focus on the first Wednesday. Workshop-like topics limited to two or three being on the second. Public hearings being on the third. Real estate and county and sort of miscellaneous items being on the fourth, and then no meeting on the fifth. And that's pretty well-continued. It, if, if not very strictly adhered to, it does tend to somewhat shift or migrate over time into other things. And there have been periodic discussions about the board meeting jointly with not only the planning board, but other boards potentially. And I think it's probably a very good idea, finance committee maybe, capital program committee. And I would just advise that if you are planning to do something like that, or that's what you'd want to see, that the agenda be pretty clear and not be overly open-ended, just have, have a bit of a focus. I know that there's been some discussion among you all recently about being able to schedule more time for the bigger policy level types of things and maybe less time on administrative items. Some of the administrative items, though, like license issues, don't, as we could see tonight, don't usually, you know, they don't always take five minutes. They might have a hitch to them that it's going to take a little longer. We've talked a bit about a separate licensing board, and I think the Government Study Committee may be looking into that. I think that, did Amy leave?
She did.
Amy's been looking into that as well because I think it probably would help somebody like her to have a separate board as well, and they could spend more time on regulations and things like that. So I, I just would, would say, I'm very happy to talk about what you want your, how you want your agenda structured or scheduled. And I advocate for doing certain things on certain Wednesdays because for staff reasons and putting together a packet, it's easier to focus on that and get the appropriate documentation together than having it all over the board and, and having to focus on just too many different things for, for a meeting. That's all.
Erica?
Sorry, I just wanted to note one thing too. Typically, we used to do public hearing items on the third Wednesday, and we still try to adhere to that. But the, the liquor license has been a little more fluid, and Amy and I did have a discussion about that last week. And I didn't realize this, and I don't know if it's new, but apparently they have to act, you as the licensing authority has to act within a liquor license application within 30 days of being, it being submitted. So that has changed, because we always said Thursday, third Wednesday, third Wednesday. And so that's become a little.
That type of thing could be overcome with a more rigorous type of schedule and understanding when things are submitted and what the opportunities are to place them on the agenda. But sometimes there are things that have to be taken out of order But sometimes there are things that have to be taken out of order because of the nature of what they are.
Is it realistic to, for annual town meeting next year, do we have enough time to look at what the charter change would be to form a licensing board? Because I like the, I like the idea.
If you do a charter change.
Because we would need a charter change, right?
You probably would need a charter change if you're going to make it formal. You could also have sort of an advisory board that, you know, hears all the applications and makes a recommendation to you. And then you're not doing all the deliberating necessarily they are. There's, there's more than one way to get at that.
Don't we almost have that now? I mean, the police and fire, they look at it, they make a recommendation and we still talk about it.
Well, yeah, they're not, they're not necessarily a group of, you know, citizens.
At large, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I really rely on their, their assessments, so.
Yeah, they would continue to.
It's a tough one. I mean, yeah, we do get into, like we did tonight, we get into some pretty, that's a, that was a policy discussion we had about that, that license application, do we want? What's the, what's our, so I think that's a good thing to have.
I think we might be able to still have the policy questions, but if 20% of our time is, is talking about, should just be up until 10 or 11?
Yep.
I think, is it worth looking into if it's not, if it's ATM 2020? I don't know how long it goes.
I think it's worth looking into because I think you're right. We don't get, I'll often hear, well, it's up to you or, because we'll hear that from staff, you know, it's really up to you. It'd be nice to get some guidance from, even if it's a group of not having a charter change, a group of citizens who have looked at it and as Libby said, come back with a recommendation. I think that makes sense.
Well, and that's kind of what we've instituted with like the real estate stuff where there's the, the real estate advisory board. And just one of the things we had talked about a little bit was more of a transactional meeting once a month.
Right.
Where maybe it doesn't even, you would know that it doesn't necessarily need to be a full board because it's all like real estate consent items and license renewals that aren't necessarily a change or a new thing to licenses.
Yeah, another option would be just to have a subcommittee of this group. You could pick two, you know, get up two volunteers, board members to meet, go through all the applications, hear, hear from staff, come up with recommendations. At least then that way, rather than a third party, you would, they would, it would at least have gone through a filter of two board members who, you know, don't act for all of us, but kind of hear what we're all thinking, so.
Could that be what Donna was saying, like we have three and you actually just go through it?
Have three.
You have three board members, actually just, and it passes it through and it's done.
Oh, I was thinking about, like in lieu of a, a group that's, you know, a licensing board that, that would, you know, get all, would act in lieu of that and then bring that transactions to the board and say, you know, this is, we recommend A, B, C, D, and F.
Is there any, is there any value of having, actually having a board? People, you have to show up if you're on a board versus a, you know, a committee that, you know, that Amy and Public Safety and a couple at large run? Does that make sense, what I'm saying? Is it worth it to go through and get a charter change and get an actual board?
I think there's some things we can try without going through a charter change, some of the ideas we've been floating around tonight.
To phase it? I try that if it's not working.
Although, wouldn't a subcommittee require open meeting law postings? Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's say we are, we have, we have a hard time filling so many different committees and people showing up.
Actually, I would, I would, because if it would give us time, I would happily volunteer for a subcommittee to work on those things we just talked about.
Okay.
Personally, so.
Libby, do we need to look at both options or do we just want to go, I guess, forward?
Well, maybe we could try to work with Amy a bit or, I'm not sure who else, to sort of lay out, if you had the licensing board, here's what will be required. If you had an advisory committee, here's what are required. If you had a subcommittee of the board, here's what would be required. And we could sort of lay out what the various sort of pros and cons are. There, there is some additional administrative work that's going to need to be done if you have, someone's going to have to take minutes, someone's going to have to post meetings, someone's going to have to put together a packet and contact the people that would be coming to the meeting, all that stuff. And so we'd have to kind of identify who, who that would be and how that would get done without hiring more people. But we could certainly put that together. I mean, as, as I mentioned, Amy has already started thinking about this and I believe she's contacted some other towns to see how they do it. There's not necessarily a standard for how they do it, but we may have enough information by now to fairly easily put something like that together.
You know, before we just spend a lot of time thinking about charter changes and all those kinds of things, you know, it might be nice just to try it, have a subcommittee for a six-month or for a year and see if it makes, I mean, the, the idea is to free up more time on our agenda.
Yes.
And it would be easy to say at the end of a year, we did or didn't do that without going through the charter change and all that kind of stuff.
I think that makes sense. I mean, there's so many events that come across Amy's desk and she has to look at it really fast and give like a quick yes or no versus having, you know, we're all preaching choir here, but having a board to look at it because maybe it could work.
I don't, I think she does actually a pretty thorough review of those things. She now is an events coordinator that can help get through that. We, subcommittee or no subcommittee, however you want to get at this, I think we need to figure out what is it that they're going to be reviewing specifically? All license applications, all, you know, what are we trying to cut down on that gives the board more time? This might be too much to tackle, but if anybody, not me, were willing to look through the agendas for the past year and sort of evaluating maybe what types of things you don't think necessarily need to be spent a lot of time on at your meeting, what are the items that if they, if taken off could free you up?
Certainly all the liquor license, to me, the liquor, anything to do with liquor license and entertainment licenses.
So applications, but maybe not like enforcement actions?
I wouldn't, I think enforcement personally, you know, I don't want to talk too much, but that's, that's an important role for the board. And it doesn't happen very frequently, it doesn't take up a lot of our time, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't pass the filter of time consumption.
Are there any ones off the top of people's heads that are like the liquor license that we feel could be part of a transactional meeting or a subcommittee?
Is it liquor and entertainment?
The real estate stuff.
Real estate consent.
The road ticketing.
I think we've cut back on the time that we've been taking on those, the yard sales and things. I think we're not, we're not going.
I think the subcommittee has had something to that.
I think, yeah, the real estate committee's really helped.
If everybody's comfortable with that, that's good.
So going forward, do we want to, we'll get your recommendations, Libby, on a couple of those options for the licensing?
What's the, what's the, what's the consensus of the group on forming a subcommittee? Is anybody, I just, could we poll the board to see what they would think about that? And then we could ask them what they thought, what are the two options, a separate meeting and a subcommittee?
I think it'd be nice to see what the options are and the pros and cons, I thought what Libby mentioned, as long as it's not adding too much, if it's pretty straightforward.
That's fine. Is that, I mean.
I think it's where we should start.
Okay.
But I am for giving all licensing, entertainment violations to another board. I'm actually, I'm okay with that. Just, just, just put it out there, even if it's down the road.
I don't, we didn't have any violations this past year.
We haven't in a while.
Amazing.
But when I first got on the board, there was, there was a long one and we could get more.
Yeah. Makes sense. Well, I think we were also talking about, were we talking about the possibility of workshops or adding in more specifically conversations about policy or, not conversations about policy, but removing the transactionals so we have more time for strategic planning, things like that? Do we need to make that a specific second Wednesday or?
We were doing that and I, I really like it, but what happens is when there's not a good topic. We were, then we were looking for stuff to, to do for workshops and didn't have, didn't have enough.
It shouldn't be that hard to come up with 12 topics. I probably have half a dozen sitting around right now, but they do take some careful consideration as to the timing and what needs to be prepared for that particular discussion. So you're right, we don't want to be struggling around to think, well, what are we going to be talking about? I think we can come up with something, but you don't want to talk about it just to talk about it. It should have some kind of a purpose to it.
Are we already doing that?
To be stuff that's important.
Yeah, I think even the list of things that you listed off, the things that you're working on.
Sure, yep. I could, I could put together a list of, of potential workshop topics that we could maybe, you know, take a look at at a later time. I, I would imagine that your fifth board member, who is one of the people that's been talking about this, will want to be here before you totally finalize anything.
I think there's even as well the opportunity to review where we are with our strategic plan as it goes on.
Yep, yep.
But we are already doing that a little bit with the Marijuana Public Forum with what DBW did, come and learn about how landfill waste option works. So we're starting to add those in anyway. It's not board-centric.
So in the year that, before you folks joined the board, we had strategic planning on every agenda and even if there wasn't, it was just basically to focus our attention on it. So sometimes it was nothing to update and sometimes it was more of a conversation. So that's another way to create focus.
And that was kind of the idea with this agenda item, was to just have everybody give some input into how the agendas are structured. It doesn't need to be a final decision.
Right.
I'm sure Matt would have some thoughts.
Yeah.
I really do like the, the public forums that we're having, you know, whether it's, DBW's been doing them and Natural Resources. I'd like to continue those through the departments.
Did anyone else have any thoughts on the possibility of joint meetings, whether it's planning or FinCom or anything like that? Is that something to consider?
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
It's great.
So we started Chair, Vice Chair, when I was Chair of Meetings of the Board, the Select Board and the Planning Board and just to create, you know, and, and staff. We found out this, anyway, so, but those were helpful. So I know we had some meetings scheduled, the joint meetings with the Finance Committee or Capcom, and I think that got, timing didn't work out.
We had that one earlier in the summer about the new sort of Capcom process. It was kind of cumbersome, having the both there. I don't know, I, I thought it was a little bit cumbersome, but I, maybe, oh, maybe what you're referring to, Jim, I don't know, is we did talk a bit about a.
Capcom.
Joint three-way meeting to, just to talk about capital projects generally before the beginning of their process, yeah, yeah.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I should actually put that on the agenda.
Should we do them when there's something to really, everyone to talk about versus saying, we're going to do them quarterly and trying to make sure we have something to talk about because it's April, April 1st and we're ready for another meeting?
I think it would be interesting. I know that there are other towns that do it, so it was something that I was just thinking about today and could do a little more research on how other towns do it. I think that with some of the other boards, there's value in just being in the same room at the same time. And there, I feel like at this stage, there will always be something to talk about and I think it will also help us be less reactive to things, which is why if it's topic-specific, it would be more reactive probably. So I would, I would tend to, I'll do more research on it, but I would tend to say regular would be better.
But it might be something, a broad topic, like discussing housing or transportation.
I mean, I'd love to meet with Concom, just to kind of see.
Or the environment.
Yeah, so.
Not to assign a homework at all, but.
To us?
Yes. You might think about, I'm not saying to do this, but you might think about going online and just looking at other Massachusetts towns' agendas and, I mean, it's very interesting to peruse through other websites and see what their agendas look like, when they meet, that kind of thing. And you, if you find one you like, maybe you would even go so far as to contact one of their board members and ask them more detailed information about how they do it. If you, like, if you find one that does seem to have sort of these one-off types of meetings to gain more time for policy discussions kind of a thing. Just thought.
Good idea.
I like to do that.
And then maybe talk to the other board, see if they're interested.
Yeah.
Don't want to force anybody into anything. Nah. Anything else? Selectments reports? I don't have any committee reports.
So just to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Close out on this?
Yeah.
Are we supposed to be working on something? Town admin?
Well, you were going to look at the options related to transactions.
The licensing.
Okay.
Licensing.
So kind of.
Pros and cons.
Okay, so you wanted to do that, got it. We can work on that and bring it back when you have a full board.
Yep. Okay, any committee reports?
Do you want a motion to do that or do we think that's?
Do you need a motion?
I don't think so. I got it.
No, it's always good to ask. Do you mind if I have any committee?
No.
Who needs that?
I think a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.